The May 26, 2022 City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin this evening by receiving any communications from the public or committee liaisons to the commission to comply with provisions of the Opens Meeting Act. The commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak this evening during this time? Okay, seeing no one, next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussions of items unless a commissioner's sole request, in which case the item will be removed from the current, from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the planning and zoning regular meeting held on Thursday, May 12, 2022?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Next on the agenda are action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 2021-18, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item this evening is to consider approving a partial preliminary plat of Friendswood Trails, Section 3A and 4A, a subdivision of 36.863 acres of land containing 46 lots and 23 reserves in five blocks out of the William Henry Survey, Abstract 84, and the Mary Sloan Survey, Abstract 184, also being a partial replat of Reserve T of the Friendswood Trails Sections 1 and 2 and Commercial. Friendswood, Texas, Galveston County. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Um, the agenda item was pretty descriptive, but I will add a few items. This is for 46 lots. This is the next section, partial sections of the Friendswood Trails planned unit development that was approved several years ago. Um, they, Denbury has retained ownership of some of the reserves throughout the plat that you can see on there because they do have oil wells that are abandoned. They are requiring some buffers around them. And in the future, if those get cleaned up, then they may be able to replat those and create more lots. Um, there were, are some outstanding conditions and reasons on your compliance memo. Uh, the last one probably being the most concerning that they, they're, they do not meet the minimum block length requirement on one of the blocks. Uh, they need, do need to apply for a subdivision variance for that item.
Before P and Z?
Yes.
Okay, if the applicant's here or one of their representatives, if they would like to make any comments introducing this topic, if you'd please come up to the microphones, please? And if you could, sir, please state your name.
Yes, sir, my name is Jeff Freeman with LJA Engineering. Um, we've been working with staff, trying to get some of these comments addressed. I know that the block length is an issue and we'll be, we'll be making a separate submittal to get that addressed shortly. So, um, other than that, I'll answer any questions you have about the development itself.
Great, Mr. Freeman, thank you. If you could just stay up there, I think we'll get to you very, very quickly.
No problem.
We'll start, go through our discussion, Mr. Sassen.
Yeah, um, Aubrey, I see, like you said, there are eight items still outstanding. Many of them are cosmetic, I'm not too worried about them. The variance is problematic. I don't think, with the variance being outstanding, we can actually approve this tonight, so we're going to end up amending this. Um, the other ones, have they been addressed yet or are they, is there any progress on those yet? So really, all eight need to stay on?
Yeah.
As items that need, still need to go?
Yes.
Okay. And the other question I had, the PUD was, was ironed out a long time ago. Um, and I'm a little unfamiliar with it. I noticed there's a lot of 60-foot lots and 70-foot lots. Is it, I'm, I'm sure you guys did this, but did you check and make sure that we still conform to the requirements of the PUD? I know that was painfully hashed out a long time ago.
Yes, yeah, no, we've, uh, we pull out the plan every time we get the plat submittal and verify the lot sizes and their locations and everything.
Okay, okay. Um, and then I, the one I didn't understand, combined reserves S and T, your number three. Uh, S does not meet the minimum lot, can you just educate me on what that means? Uh, I'll read it for everybody else, too. Uh, one of the comments is combine reserves S and T, reserves S does not meet minimum lot size for future residential lot.
Yeah, so S and T, um, there's, there were three reserves like next to each other and then two of them, I think, backed up to each other and they're all separated for future residential lots. They have wells on them right now, but they could be replatted in the future. But S couldn't just be one lot and it's adjacent to the other reserves that are dedicated for the same thing. So we were just asking them to combine them.
So you're being helpful to say if you ever want to put up, I mean, it's really not a violation, but they wouldn't be able to put a house on it later on, which they probably want to do.
Right, not just that reserve, no, it doesn't.
Right, so I think that's, that's helpful of the staff, thank you for doing that.
Mm-hmm.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Can I interject on that one? There, there was a reason why we, why we did it that way. S and T are currently owned by two different entities.
Ah!
The small one is owned by Horton. The larger one is still owned by Denbury.
Okay.
So we made them two separate reserves so that in the future, when Denbury transfers that property to Horton, they can do it by referencing the reserve on the plat rather than writing a separate meets and bounds description for it. So the intent is for, um, uh, not, not T, the reserve directly to the east of the small one, our intent was for those two reserves to be combined into one lot in the future. So it'll be one long reserve rather than the one lot south of it being 50 feet wider.
Gotcha.
50 or 60 feet wider. So that was the only reason, it wasn't never intended to be its own separate lot in the future.
But because of ownership reasons.
But because of ownership, we separated it into a separate reserve.
Yes.
So.
I, I think where we're going at the end of this is, is to defer this and wait for these to be combined, especially the variance one. However, the one for combining S and T, not really, it's just being helpful.
Yeah.
It's basically, and if they don't want to do that, it doesn't prevent us from doing it. It just means from an external viewpoint, it looks suboptimal.
They can just, yeah, they can just provide that explanation on the response sheet.
That's fine. And I, I may have some questions about the wells, but I know Mr. Matranga is going to ask about that, too. So I will, I will not steal his thunder.
No, no, no. Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, just the other one, uh, the, the subdivision variance on number eight is of concern. But the previous one also, what, what is the situation with the road and the access from Brazoria County?
Well, we're, so the PUD, the approved PUD shows an access point to the property to the west that's in Brazoria County. And there is somewhat of a dirt road on the property to the west. Um, it ties into a private street system that is basically a bunch of dirt roads and that's not maintained by the county. So we put the public street stub lining up with where that dirt road is specifically to, one, instead of doing a reserve and an access easement, putting a public street there, putting a stub there, showing people on the ground that in an emergency, that there is a way to get out. Yes, it's across private property, but in trying to conform with the PUD and trying to provide that second point of access, we put that public street stub up against the county line in line with where that existing dirt road is. Um, staff has asked for a little more assurance as far as getting access across that and that's what we're getting into the weeds with.
Okay, I think that needs to be.
You're working on that or are you going to handle it another way?
We're debating options.
Valuing options.
Well, we'll, we'll address it one way or another, but we're, we're, internally, we're debating some options on how to, how to address it and make everybody comfortable with that solution.
Okay, I understand a little bit more, thank you. I, I think it'll, it'll take a little time probably to get through these seven and eight with staff, so, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Kerner?
Okay, well, I, I think there's still a significant number of open issues. So I, I tend to agree that it's probably not time for us to really adjudicate this yet. But the only question I had in this really may be for staff, is there some handwriting on the lot summary table? Do those lot quantities, does that reflect the reserve section or is that just a miscount in what was originally put on the preliminary plat?
Uh, that was just a miscount on the lots. In the title block, I changed them and on the lot summary table, I changed them, so they all match.
Okay, so it doesn't yet include the proposed lots for the reserve sections? Because there are a number of reserve sections here, and I understand the rationale now why those are there, but it doesn't include any of that.
No, ma'am, those are in the reserve table.
Okay, but then does the, do all of the other, I'll say, requirements for like roads and access points and all of that match the future intended number of lots in that subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
There will actually be less lots. When it's all said and done, there'll be less lots plotted on the ground that was approved in the PUD, mainly because of the existing wells.
The original PUD, okay, got it, thank you. That's, that's all the questions I had.
Okay, as Commissioner Sassen alluded to earlier, I did have some questions on the, on the wells. I am, when looking at this, obviously, this is not the way anybody would want to develop where there's houses, you know, five or six houses in a row, then an empty lot with a, a well on it, and I've heard abandoned well, and then, you know, four, a couple of lots more of houses and then a, then more. Uh, I just want to, it's not the normal way somebody would do this, but I understand what, you're trying to get this done as quickly as you can, not having ownership of those pieces. But with that said, my real concern is, is that these are, I heard abandoned wells and I, if you have some difference, but are they abandoned wells?
I believe that none of them are in production. Some of them have been capped, some of them, I believe, haven't. The ones that haven't are the, I believe, are the ones that have the buffer around them and where we've meandered the road a little bit to go around the buffer. And those reserves that have the wells in them are not, uh, they're not restricted to future single-family use. They're restricted to open space. So they're not intend, those reserves are not intended to be replatted at some point in the future.
Okay, okay. My, one of my concerns is just if I close my eyes and, or look at the drawing and kind of imagine what it's going to look like, what I'm really, I think, would not be optimum would be you have somebody, you're building a house, you build a house, you move a family in and next door, there's still this open space with a well that somebody's going to come in and work on at some point. They may, you know, close, abandon it, they may close it, they may, I'm, I'm concerned about, because some of these radiuses, at least one of the radiuses goes into the lot next door, which is a single, single-family residential. So I, I'm concerned about this work going on after you've sold these houses to people or somebody, the people that you represent sold, sold these houses. Help me feel better about that, what, what am I missing?
The, the buffer is, was, the buffers were put there at Denbury's request just to give them a little extra room when they go in and, for lack of a better term, clean it up. Because like I said, I believe some of them haven't been properly capped. None of them are producing wells and I don't think that's ever the intent. Um, at the end of the day, it's basically just going to be a pocket park in the middle of the neighborhood. It's just going to be open space, probably owned by the HOA at some point, and that's.
Okay, I'm just concerned having a.
As far as I know, as always.
Having a well next door to, to somebody that.
I don't think you'll, at the end of the day, you won't see anything on the surface.
Okay, and.
We just, the developer, um, does not want to put a home on top of an old well.
Sure, sure, I, I get that, but I'm.
So, and that's the reason for the reserves.
Thank you for that.
And the, and the buffer areas was mainly just for Denbury to go in and, and do a little bit of work.
Right, but notice that at least on, on the drawing, I noted one well where the buffer, actually, the radius of that buffer went into somebody's, into the house lot next door.
I, I think there is a minor encroachment. It's, it's far enough away, it won't encroach into the house pad, but I, I don't, I don't see Denbury extending their work that far since it, it encroaches into a lot, but won't affect, won't, won't affect the neighbor, won't, won't affect the house pad.
Okay, I, I'm just concerned that there's a lot of intent, that, that some of these wells have not been plugged in, abandoned yet. And I just think, what are you going to do? Do you happen to know what they're going to do on notifying these homeowners that these abandoned wells are next door?
I can't answer that other than they're shown on, they'll be shown on the recorded plat that everybody gets it closing.
Yeah, and we all know that, that's not always, you notice things like, okay, I got it, I understand. Uh, but there could be well-plugging activity going on while somebody's living next door.
There could be, yes, sir.
Okay.
Just to ask you an unfair question, Aubrey kind of blindsides you and you can say, I don't know, you're allowed. Is there a provision that we can ensure that certain lots get this mentioned to the homeowner before they buy? Uh, to say that, you know, potentially, we'll have heavy equipment right next door to you doing a PNA because the railroad commission required it, you know, and Denbury's out there doing stuff? Uh, the concern I have is the same as Mr. Matranga, that, that, you know, that you buy this lot and suddenly there's heavy equipment next to it and you said, what the, what's going on here? Why, you know, I'm in the nice new subdivision and now they've got these concrete trucks and these, you know, I, I work for a company, so they move a lot of big equipment around.
We can make the suggestion when we approve their final plat. We did this, something similar with West Ranch. Um, when they built Lake Friendswood, uh, the park down the street, we just wanted them to be sure and notify all those property owners that there was going to be a public park down the street. Were you doing West Ranch at that time?
What section was it? I don't remember.
It was one of the sou, the southern sections, but we did the same thing. I mean, we can't require anything, we can just encourage the builders to either post-notice or, you know, in a disclaimer in their closing papers or something like that.
We're just trying to avoid that homeowner, potential homeowner being blindsided. You know, I, I just, as, as long as he knows what's coming up, I have no, you know, no problems, but I think we're on the same page on that.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a number of open items. Normally, um, we get these items, you know, we get these plats and replats and partial plats kind of further along before they come to us. But it looks like there's some here that are going to have to even require our approval.
I understand, especially, especially with the block length variance, I understand.
Okay, okay, okay. So we, we have a motion to approve, is anybody?
Yeah, so I'm going to ask.
Want to vote on that or are you going to amend that?
I'm going to ask for some help from our attorney. Uh, so, so I guess I need to withdraw my motion to approve and replace it. Is that, keep me out of trouble here, please.
You can either do that or you just can, uh, there could be a secondary motion to postpone until a certain date. So you can postpone it till your next meeting.
Oh, beautiful, that's much easier than what I thought. Okay, so I propose, I'm, a motion to postpone the decision on this until the outstanding items, um, that are listed here, with the possible exception of number three, get addressed and.
Is that really the, you know, you're making the motion, but.
The motion would be to date certain, so if you could get it.
To date certain, to.
So our next meeting is June.
Or before certain dates.
Oh, and that would be, would that be the deadline for the first? I mean, they, they may take a month to do this, so I don't want to.
It's pending waiver approval, right, so.
Yeah, I, I, the, the, go ahead, I'm sorry, somebody has something to say here and I don't, I'm.
Can they postpone it or does the commission have to give a decision within X amount of days?
That's true.
It has to be within 30 days?
Yeah, I think there, your three options are to approve, conditionally approve with conditions, or disapprove due to reasons.
Yeah, and what I'm tempted to do is, is disapprove with the reasons that are listed out here for, what you've already listed as outstanding, outstanding conditions, except for number three. Um, and if there is a way to add in the notification to homeowners that have adjacent properties, if there is, if there is not, then we couldn't put that in there. But, um, and all that's a lot of wording and not a real clean motion.
Since there's a, a motion to approve out, can they just not vote in favor of it?
Yes, that would be action to deny it, yes.
Oh, okay, so we can just vote against me?
But, but we have to state the, for, for all you watching the sausage making. There are, some of these rules are relatively new that we haven't had to use. So whether we approve or with conditions or deny until changes, so can we?
So go ahead, you can go ahead and deny the motion and then make a new motion if you want to, to. You've got a motion to approve, you can, that can fail.
I need to withdraw the motion or just fail?
Or you can withdraw it either way.
I don't like to have mine fail, so let's withdraw my motion with, if you can second it, Nick? Okay, and then the new motion is motion to.
Defer.
Uh, to defer?
Just to disapprove with the following, with the reasons stated on the compliance memo.
God bless you, Aubrey, that's exactly what I wanted to say. Okay, do I have to repeat that for the word? No, I think we can count that. Second?
Is that your motion?
That's my motion, that's Aubrey's, what Aubrey said. We have a second?
Second.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous. But thank you for coming and explaining that to us.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Don't worry, we'll get it.
I know you're working it.
We'll, we'll get it, we'll get it worked out.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, our next action item is to consider approving a site plan amendment for an existing building located at 300 West Parkwood Avenue, Friendswood, Texas. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Aubrey, is there a staff summary?
Yes, sir, um, so these are some pretty minor changes to rebrand an existing car wash. Um, there's no changes to the site layout, just some minor architectural changes. Um, but we just wanted to bring it to y'all for consideration.
Okay, if the applicant's here or representative, if you'd like to say a word or two introducing your, your request?
Hi, my name is Greg Murray. I am Executive Vice President of Real Estate for Whitewater Car Wash. Uh, this is a recent acquisition that we just completed less than a year ago and just trying to make some improvements to the building to make it more to our standard and give it a, a better street appeal.
Hey, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kerner?
I, actually, I have no questions on this one. Um, I took a look at it and I'm looking forward to seeing the improvement there in that location.
Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, I feel the same way, it looks like just a upgrade into the aesthetics. Um, it's, uh, and I think it's a positive improvement, so I'm all for it.
Commissioner Clark?
Nothing to add?
I have nothing as well. I, I agree, it, it should look nicer than definitely what's, what's been there before. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay, our last action item this evening is to consider approving the site plan for a new commercial building to be located at 1715 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. This item was tabled in our last meeting. Before we take any action, we, I believe we must remove this item from the table. Is there a motion to take this site plan from the table?
Motion to remove from the table?
Yes.
And to consider? Is that the right answer?
Yes. There a second?
I think I tabled it.
Second.
All in favor? Shows to be unanimous, okay. Uh, this item is now taken from the table. Is there a motion to, a motion, a new motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Aubrey, any additional staff comments?
Um, no, unfortunately, I wasn't here at this meeting, so, um, I'll, uh, let y'all take that over. We have the applicant here and some other city staff to address some traffic concerns and any other questions y'all might have.
Further rec.
For the record, my name is Murad Kabiri, City Manager and previous city engineer, um, long before this item was ever rezoned. But I'm here this evening to answer any questions y'all have relative to the traffic, both in relation to this project as well as just general traffic issues in and around FM 518 and FM 528.
We appreciate you coming this evening. Okay, if the applicant is here and would like to say any words introducing this project, we'd be glad to hear that.
Hello, Louis Tanos, Tanos Development Group President, and I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Perfect.
Thank you, Louis.
Perfect, okay. Commissioner Clark? Any questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to, uh, we, we had a lot of questions, um, surrounding the, the traffic for one and, um, I know that we went back and forth and I think, um, you know, it's, it's, it certainly are, I guess, are, um, our position to complain about said traffic, but it's really not a, a cause for considering or not considering within the approval of this site plan, right?
I, I would say that based on the way the, the ordinance reads, any additional traffic that impacts the neighbors to this facility, I would say, is and within our purview. I mean, generally, I think what, what traffic happens on 518 is, I, I am going to make a position of my personal opinion is not within our purview, but if it, but if their traffic from this site plan impacts other businesses, then I think it is in our purview, is the way I read it. If anybody reads it differently, straighten me out.
Well, that's, those are the questions I have, actually, have to do with that area, not the 518.
Okay, so I'm just responding to your, that's my.
No, I appreciate it and, um, yeah, so for me, I don't understand the, the traffic plan, if you will, uh, how, how the traffic will be ingressing and egressing from the area given, um, that one of the entrances and it exits is really not there now. The, the one from Taco Bell, I guess, is that where it's from, I think?
You're talking about entrances into that, into that park that are in the building today?
Parking area.
Yeah.
But there is a driveway for Taco Bell that I think this, that the property lines up with, is that correct, Mr. Tanos?
There's an access, yes.
Right, 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 it, it lines up.
And that access easement was plotted years ago, back when Howard subdivision was first subdivided, on which this property sits.
Right, for the purpose of serving this property.
Correct.
Okay, and, and then, um, it's, it's hard, hard to say how opening that to a road will further affect traffic on 518 and the customers that are associated with those businesses along 520, did I say 518? I meant 528, and those businesses along 528. Uh, and so I, I wonder how, um, that traffic will be controlled. Uh, we already see the situation at, at the Starbucks where, you know, at any given moment during the regular business day, you may not be able to drive onto this site because of block traffic there. And, and so I think, you know, I, I don't, I'm not sure that this is Mr. Tanos's problem. This is a city problem because it was the way that the roads were designed that Mr. Tanos has chosen to build on. So I don't know how we, how we've, how we get this better. Um, to me, you know, opening up a new light down on leisure is, you know, a minor help to what we had a year ago. But, um, I, I, I think we have serious problems here and like I say, I don't think they're Mr. Tanos's problems, but the city should do something about it and it's not our job to fix this. We have, we have no resources to fix it, but Mo, you're the, you're the man.
Well, uh, let me back up because there's a lot of questions that were posed there. One, whether or not this traffic issue is within the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Yes, traffic and land use issues are within the purview of your subjectivity when you're making a recommendation to council regarding the future land use plan map, uh, making a recommendation to council on the major thoroughfare plan, making recommendations to city council on rezoning applications. That has all been done for this tract. So when it was decided years ago that this property can be developed commercially, either for office, retail, or what have you, the decision was made that the intensity that's being proposed at this site is accepted and now whoever owns the lot can develop it by right. So the denial of the site plan based upon impacts of traffic is not within the purview of this, this body. You can make a recommendation to city council when the rezoning was before you to say, we don't believe that this tract is suitable for commercial back when it was rezoned or back when the future land use map was done. But once council made the decision that the track can be developed in this manner, there's nothing that you can do to say, well, I just don't think it could be developed because it's going to cause a traffic issue.
Can I ask a question along those lines, if I may? But where the traffic flow is within this property and how it affects the surrounding neighborhoods, I believe that is within our purview because that does, that is specifically related to how this is plotted.
Well, the property was rezoned to a planned unit development and within that planned unit development, a site plan was included that showed this exact layout. So council already said, yes, we're in agreement that this track can be developed in this manner and within these access points.
With the traffic flow that exists already in this plat.
Correct.
Mr. Kabiri, you have forgotten more than I will ever know about. Mr. Kabiri, you have forgotten more than I will ever know about these rules, and I will be the first to admit that. But I respectfully disagree that it's not, that during a site plan review, I, I truly believe that it is in our purview to, to look at this when it impacts other businesses. Like the Taco Bell, like the Starbucks. Now, if we went and asked those people, my guess is they're all way in favor of your development, like, like a lot of people are way in favor of your development. And, and, and I think as many people up here on the dais are in favor of it. We're just concerned that if there's accidents out there, that we have given this the proper depth of review and discussion, but, you know, off-line, we can, you and I can have that discussion philosophically on what site plans should include and what that review should and should not include. But, but with that, I mean, again, I will defer to you as our expert in that area.
The, the bigger issue is simply traffic at five twenty-eight and five eighteen. Whether this property was developed now or not, we are impacted by the growth in League City and impa- and growth in Pearland. Folks are traveling through Friendswood along five eighteen, are traveling from forty-five down five twenty-eight, and it's caused congestion. There are minor incremental improvements that can be made. Uh, you saw some of them, and some of them were referenced tonight, the, the light at Leisure, the curb cut at Leisure. The slip left turn movement that was put in place to prohibit the cross movement from Chick-fil-A to Hunter's Creek Estates. All reducing conflict points and helping traffic move more smoothly. Separate from that, we're working with Tech Dot right now to do dual left turn lanes at five twenty-eight and five eighteen in all directions. We're working with them to add right turn, additional right turn capacity so that, um... So that more cars can get through that intersection faster. We're working with them to optimize the signal timing at not only five twenty-eight, five eighteen, but, uh, winding way in five twenty-eight, at Leisure, and five eighteen at winding and five eighteen the other direction, and at Sunset in five twenty-eight. The best solution for this area, no one wants it, and that's great separated crossing. Where one of the roadway goes over the other, because it would drastically change the character and nature of that entire intersection.
But what you're saying is you're already, again, and we, most of us, I mean, we live here, we go through those intersections every day. So what you're saying is there are already steps in place that the city is, and Tech Dot specifically, or you're working with Tech Dot, to address some of those traffic issues.
Correct.
Which hopefully, and you're, what you're thinking is, will make the turn into Mr. Tanos' building in the future hopefully better than what we see now where backing up on, in front of Starbucks.
If I may offer a commentary, however. So those changes, those incremental changes that you've made, by the way, have been great. I, I use that intersection very frequently. They've addressed certain issues, but what they've also done is created secondary issues. The primary one I'm concerned about with regards to this property is now that, I'm gonna call it a thoroughfare, it is acting like a road at the, the base of the, the plat that you see on the screen, right? And it truly is acting like a cut-through road where people are traversing that, heading from, I guess that's Leisure-
Five twenty-eight to Leisure Lane.
Well, yeah, Leisure Lane to five twenty-eight in order to avoid the intersection at five eighteen.
Now, we've taken a lot of steps to address that. As much as you say it's not really my problem, that was our primary concern was, because I go out there with my wife and my daughter, and people are speeding through, they're like, nobody's business.
Through that area, right at the base of this plat, and that concerns me.
Absolutely. Yeah, so what we've done, and what you see up there at that site plan, is that entire curb gets removed, it all becomes parking lot now. It's no longer a road through the front of that.
It still acts like a road.
No, no, I, I understand. So we've moved the front of the building to face that very front part there, putting stop signs at the intersection, speed bumps on the road here.
Oh, where's there a stop sign?
We're, we're adding those.
Oh, okay.
You're planning, future.
Future, yeah.
Okay, that doesn't show up on this plat.
No, I, I understand. We're gonna put our own stop and speed controls there because it is bad, you're right.
It is real, yeah, and, and regardless of the Starbucks, which adds its own dimension of chaos because you have people in, facing the wrong direction of traffic, waiting in the, the drive-through line.
Well, we, we understand as well. I have four other entrances to this property, and to think the people that work there are gonna realize, "I'm not coming in through Starbucks. That's not gonna be an issue."
Right, no, that's right.
And the other thing is, we immediately changed this zoning or this, this use of this building from retail, which would've been a complete disaster, to office. That was to our own detriment in some ways, but to, to us, it made more sense. If you look at our five oh five project, people come to work and they stay and they don't leave. We created the walking paths and the park-type atmosphere. We want people to walk to lunch and walk back to work. We're trying to limit the traffic that we create with that building, but also I wanna slow that road down because, you know, I wouldn't walk my kitchen.
Yeah, especially for pedestrians, yeah, to get to the, the restaurants and stuff that are right there. So, so let me ask, because you brought it up. The, um, the list of potential businesses in that area is pretty broad. And so are you envisioning that the, the primary use of this building be a nine-to-five kind of use and that there isn't gonna be some kind of like a restaurant where in the evenings there would be additional traffic and-
I have no restaurants, I have no retail uses whatsoever. Everything's to this point, and I'm, I'm close to a hundred percent or past a hundred percent LOIs is professional medical. So it's a come and stay and very minimal traffic.
And, and really business hours, not, not extended late hours.
Exactly. That was our plan from the beginning, and it is, it has gone without a hitch.
It's moving in that direction. Okay, I love the idea of stop signs.
And as Chairman Matranga alluded to, that's how it was zoned with the PUD.
I'm sorry?
So we, we adjusted the PUD back in, let's say, twenty eighteen, or actually twenty twenty-
We eliminated all retail uses.
Yeah, I just, it, 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 it's some of the wording in the, the list of potential businesses that could be there could be interpreted to have some things that would be like after-hours, late into the evenings and that kind of thing. I'm, I was hoping that wasn't gonna be the case.
Well, the good news is I get to say no. No, we have no intentions of having anyone after, after six o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
So the concern at the last meeting, I, I sense a little bit of frustration that we're doing this twice.
No.
Was that this, we have arguably the worst place in Friendswood in terms of traffic. We have Starbucks backing up on five eighteen already, and we're adding on to traffic. Now, I hear that it's only coming in once a day and leaving once a day, but it's coming in at eight o'clock when Starbucks is already backed up on five eighteen. We're making it worse. So we start this facility up, and then in two months, there's three accidents and somebody's hurt. And somebody's gonna say, "Who the hell approved this? What, what kind of planning group do we have that doesn't do any planning?" So we did wanna hear what the plan is. Now, what I'm hearing is, the plan is you have five entrances and it'll seek to its own entrance, uh, and, and it'll, it'll solve itself, and I think there's probably some truth in that.
I think anyone with common sense is gonna say, "I'm not gonna wait in this line."
Although, but they may be caught anyway as somebody swerves around them because now there's extra people swerving around them. I mean, it's already backing up on the road. It's a bad situation, and we're not making it better.
Right.
The, the traffic operates a lot like water. It's gonna find the path of least resistance.
I agree with you.
And over time, yes, the more congestion there, the more opportunity for conflict points exist. But traffic engineers look at this for that very reason, to minimize conflict points where they can and allow for the free flow of traffic. Unfortunately, when it comes to retail and commercial development, they seek these opportunities. So, a little bit of backstory, when we were recruiting Chick-fil-A, we got asked a number of times by council members, "Why don't we have a Chick-fil-A in Friendswood?" Chick-fil-A would thrive in Friendswood. That's the type of business we need. We were meeting with Chick-fil-A. They wanted property at five twenty-eight and five eighteen. They want it to be where Amico Federal Credit Union is right now. They want it to be where Jack in the Box is right now.
And they also back out on the road sometimes on five eighteen, on a different road, right?
And we offered them property in front of West Ranch. We offered them property in front of Friendswood Lakes subdivision, and they said, "We don't wanna go there." I'm like, "Are you nuts? They're gonna come to you. Wherever you, you could put it at the end of Friendswood, next to Alvin, they will come to you." And they're like, "We're not doing a deal unless it's at this location." This location was already congested. We knew it was gonna get worse. So we had one option of trying to address that by making some incremental improvements. Ultimately, the only way, and I referenced the great separated intersection, five twenty-eight's gonna need medians as well. When you start removing the opportunities for folks to make multiple cuts in any direction, wherever they want, uh, you reduce those conflict points and you allow for more free flow of traffic. But Tanos did exactly what we wanted him to do, brought a, a use here that was at least amount of impact to the area as what it could've been without it being residential. And we didn't want residential there. This was the heart of our commercial corridor or commercial mode in Friendswood. It reflects that on the future land use map that y'all just spent this last better part of a year advocating and getting public input on.
No, we're not disagreeing. It should be commercial. We, and it sounds like we're critical of your development. If that's any way coming forward, no. We, we are excited about this new development you're doing. I think it's gonna be just as beautiful as the one you already put up there. I, I'm, I'm very supportive of that. But there is a, a, about a concern here, and, and I guess what we do is we, we trust that the traffic will work its way, like you say, like water seeking its own level, will, will work its way out. And, and we won't have bad things happen after this gets started. I, I, I heard over and over again, "Oh, very little traffic. It's always gonna be once a day in and out." When you have medical facilities, that's not once a day. That's everybody who has to go into the, see the medical people come, are coming in and out. And at eight o'clock in the morning, when, when I'm most worried about it, is when the peak traffic comes in. I'm assuming people work eight to four or eight to five. And so the, the, there is a traffic impact. It is making it worse. I don't know, I don't have a solution, so I, I'm, I'm less sympathetic to my point of view here, just bringing up problems and not coming up with an answer.
I, I certainly can't guarantee it, but I would think that if you're intelligent enough to have a job in one of these places, you're gonna learn that you're not gonna go sit in line in Starbucks to get to your, to your job.
My daughter, every year, every day comes up five eighteen, turns right, and takes her writ, life in her hands, turning over two lanes to get away from Starbucks. And she is nervous about it. She says every day, "I have to do this." I'm not making it better.
Well, you know, you, you know my opinion of the Starbucks situation, and you know what I would like to do to fix that.
I would love having an alternate Starbucks in the area. I would, that's, that's, I don't have the financial resources you have, but I would, I would go to that Starbucks if you did that to help support them.
I am desperate to work on it. I, I see it as a problem. I'd like to be the solution to that problem. It's gonna take some time, but that is definitely-
And I, I think that would solve a lot. I, I think the Chick-fil-A impact is less severe than the Starbucks impact, personally.
Yes.
Um, but I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop talking because I'm not really adding anything to the conversation, other than describing why, why we delayed last week and, and, and want, and appreciate both of you coming. This is two heavy hitters coming to describe this solution to us, and appreciate that.
So if there was a traffic problem at the Starbucks that we kind of are riding this horse quite, right into the ground. But if there was, I assume that there are things that you can do with DOT and others to address this.
Correct. So that was what includes closing driveways to minimize further access points, installing the same median improvements that you saw on five eighteen on five twenty-eight, so your daughter's not crossing two lanes of traffic, cutting right in front of the Starbucks area, Taco Bell for that matter. Encouraging folks to go to the signalized intersections. The only way to reduce that conflict point is draw, uh, pushing them to winding way in five twenty-eight and to Leisure and five eighteen. So if she didn't wanna cut across traffic, turning left on the winding way at the signalized intersection, going to the winding way and Leisure Lane, stop sign, making a right turn and coming in the backside.
I'm worried about the other direction, turning right on Leisure Lane and then left on winding way, but yes.
But ultimately, the, the, the way to fix that is to put a median to where people can, can no longer make left turn movements in, on five twenty-eight.
So if we advocate though for, for the neighborhood right there, they would probably not want you turning there on winding way because now you're, you're gonna tremendously increase traffic right through their front yard area.
Correct. Uh, but unfortunately, it's, traffic is not going anywhere. We're in a community that's, is growing, not at a very fast clip, but it's, it's unavoidable. Hopefully with the remote working solutions and stuff, some changes may be made in the coming years to people's, uh, traffic habits. Ten years ago, in the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, it issues a manual each year that sets the, the estimated traffic trips away from your house to your house based upon every land use known to man. Those patterns hopefully will change over time based on people's changing work environments, but we're not gonna be able to solve the-
It's not a guarantee, yeah.
The, the only part that I have direct control over is that road in front of the building, which we're gonna put a stop to that being a raceway like immediately. That, that, that bothers me.
Yeah, well, putting a stop sign in a crosswalk there, I think will be a tremendous asset.
I don't know if I'm, am I, if we put a cross-
You can put a crosswalk. You could also put, you're putting speed bumps as well.
Yeah, I'm putting at least eight speed bumps through that area. No one's gonna wanna drive through there. The way that they're doing it now, they're speeding through there. No one's gonna wanna go through there.
It's, it's dangerous.
Well, now, right now, you have it cut open and locked off.
No, no.
No, it's open.
I went to Chipotle the other day.
It is open.
It's filled in nicely and open.
They filled it back in.
Okay, that was quick.
That's when I go out of town.
Okay.
Okay. No, that, that was my first concern. That, and creating a use that didn't do the retail traffic, we did not wanna do that at all, so we particularly-
I love, I love it, and I actually love the, the plan you have for phase B, right? I mean, with the, the, putting in the pond and, and all of that lands. I, my curiosity is actually, when is that gonna happen? Because that, that can't happen soon enough, I think, to make the nearby residents happy.
So that's not a Lewis issue, issue as much as it is an issue with the, the drainage district that staff is working to resolve. The district is not happy with having trails within the maintenance, uh, the maintenance berm of the detention pond.
We're getting there.
But believe it or not, that was actually aimed at the traffic issue. Because we wanted to create a place where all the people that work in the building did not wanna leave. So walking paths, benches, outside eating areas, landscape lighting, all that stuff, trees, shaded areas.
Gives them an opportunity to stay.
Go walk and get your lunch, go come back, walk around the trail, sit in the park area. And that, and I don't wanna stare at a detention pond next to the twenty-five million dollar building. That's the other issue. But, you know, we wanted to create a place that people could go to work, and it's more like a- Campus. A campus. That was the whole idea. So we'll get there, and it'll be pretty-
I love that. I love that.
And I think that'll help, that'll help some of this traffic, you're right.
Yeah, well, the traffic was one of our very, very first concerns on this, and that we've done everything that we could possibly think of to do to make it as minimal as possible. Starting with the tenants. The tenants is the most important thing. And, I mean, God help us all, if we had an LA Fitness there, and that place would be a mad house all day long. Yeah. The, the owners thought I was nuts by turning it to office instead of retail, but I just thought it was the smartest, it was the best thing to do. I think it, it's gonna work out in the long run. It's definitely gonna be a good addition.
Sounds like you'd be very successful in getting people's attention to that building, so, good job.
So far.
Okay, so, um, moving away, well, one, thank both of you. This is not, this is the kind of information we did not have in our last meeting, so thank you for coming to this one and talking to us about this. That's very helpful, at least for me. I had one other question that was hanging out there for me, and that, oh, I'm sorry, then. Well, let, let, let me just ask my one quick question, then I can be done, and since I teed it up. No, no, I appreciate that, but-
Yes, sir.
Is there gonna be a sign, site plans usually include some sort of signage. Is there, is there a sign for this building that's gonna, I mean, there, Vergata Commons has a sign. Is there gonna be a separate sign? I, I did not see one on any of your drawings. I may have missed it.
I have access to the Vergata signs out front. I do have that, but I believe I do have a magnet location.
We've got, we've got a wayfinding that we're working on that, but that's a separate permit, that's a whole separate.
Wayfinding sign, like directional signage.
Okay, so-
It's a different permit, it's not involved with what I'm doing right now.
But the, putting a wall sign on the, the building would be his biggest and most effective signage.
That makes sense. That's what I, that's what I was looking for. Just wonder what your thoughts were, that's-
We have three different people fighting over the top of the building, so we haven't really made a decision there yet, but apparently I didn't charge enough last time.
Good point.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
Actually, that's, that relates very closely to my, my other point, other than the, I'd like to close up. My, my own interpretation of the traffic issue is that we're in this, in this position, all of us, because of decisions that were made a decade ago or so. I'm not sure exact timing. Were you, were you involved in that timeframe?
Uh, well, I've been here nearly fifteen years, but the decisions were in nineteen seventy-one, when we adopted zoning and adopted commercial for this area is when the decision was-
Started, yeah.
Started.
But, but at some point, when the, when the layout of this entire property took place and those access roads in the, in the parking lot were laid out and stuff like that, was a timeframe when the, the, the... I'll just call it the loose team between DOT and the city and maybe commercial developers were not successful in predicting what this was gonna turn into. You know, and, and, you know, I, I come from a world where we try to plan those things, and rather than letting water seek its own, own level, you know, I like to-
Easiest route.
I would like to be more active in, in the, in the plan and control traffic before it gets to the point where it figuratively explodes. So, um, so that's my visceral response to this kind of situation, and, and maybe I'm just unrealistic.
No, and that's a fair assessment to make, and definitely something that we all strive to, to accomplish. Unfortunately, this, we don't have a blank sheet of paper. We're not dealing with, uh, an opportunity to do a master plan development where we control all facets of the growth in this area. We're given a, a, a set of circumstances that involve multi-jurisdictions, uh, not only the city and the state, but also the fact that we have growth on either side of us. We're dealing with a situation where we don't own all the properties. And at the end of the day, this body and ours, the, the city as a whole, can restrict the development of property, uh, without just comp, uh, just consideration. You can't, your, your answer cannot be that this track cannot be developed because there's a traffic problem.
Right.
Because that would become a regulatory taking, which federal law prohibits us from doing.
Right.
So we try to find ways that we're able to achieve our goals and adopt the quality of life that we strive for without impending the developer from being able to do what they wanna do.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, and I understand where you're coming from, and I'm just, uh, putting out there the, the, the desire to plan as far forward as is reasonable and maybe unreasonable.
No, but we're, we're doing that right now with the comprehensive plan update. The things that Aubrey and her teams are working are, are the very things, the foundations that are gonna be addressing these issues. But it's much like anything else we do, it's, you're gonna see incremental improvement over time. You're not gonna be able to-
Right. Yeah, and I, I grant that figuring out what the traffic flow is going to need or wanna do in, in ten years is- Yeah, and I I grant that figuring out what the traffic flow is going to need or want to do in in ten years is a difficult task. But but that is the task we're, you know, that the city's given unfortunately. So I'll I'll end that that side. And the other thing is, uh, on the signage, I I I I observed uh last time, and I I'm not sure of the truth of this. But the the general appearance of your property setback from the main roads surrounding it is gonna is gonna require. Some significant effort, I think, to tell people where to go, to not just w-wayfinding, but, you know, where is this building I'm driving to? I've never been to this medical office, I don't know where to go, do I turn here, do I turn there? I I don't know how that's gonna happen, but um I I think it it will be a problem for some. And uh to a-ask you to make good decisions there, but I'm excited about the development. You've done a great job uh for for this and for our city and for that, I thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No, thank you for answering them.
Thank you too for coming again, I really appreciate that, it's very, very helpful. We have a motion to approve it and a second, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous, thank you very much. Our next agenda topic is to discuss the proposed commission's liaison schedule for the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. Becky, is that you?
Uh, it can be, sure. So we talked about um, or actually, we didn't just talk about, we approved uh removing the other liaison assignments um to be on an as needed basis. And it was decided to keep the liaison from the city to or from the commission to Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. Uh, Mr. Chairman asked me to come up with a schedule to kind of share the responsibilities. I started originally alphabetically and then we had to move people around um since since Mr. Clark is leaving us. Um, so this is the proposal, we can tweak it, we can make changes. I know um Commissioner Mann said he's more than happy to to spend more time on it. Um, but I think maybe just kind of treat it like the the high school kids in retail. If you can't make it, then you swap, you know, trade shifts with somebody.
Right.
Um, so whatever y'all would like to do, we are more than happy to put that out for you.
Right, and I'm not on the list per se, but I can also fill in if if all other avenues fail.
Right, um, and they do have a set schedule and they also offer um Microsoft Teams meetings at this point. They started them during COVID and they've maintained them, so uh I think you can watch from the comfort of your own home or desk.
Or hotel room.
I'm sorry?
Or hotel room.
Oh, yes, uh, they do meet the second and fourth.
Probably gonna be traveling in September, which is the only reason I say that.
You can swap.
I might have to.
They do meet twice a month, um, second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at eight o'clock in the district office, which is here in Friendswood. So like I said, there's a proposed schedule, we can make changes or we can just wing it, whatever y'all would like to do.
Yeah, I I think you did exactly what I asked, thank you very much. You did a good job in in laying this out. And we would like to continue, we've stopped all the other liaison assignments, as we talked about last meeting. But this was one that we wanted to at least try to continue to support that.
Uh, just for clarification, I think we also kept the liaison to the city council.
City council, that technically you're you're correct, continuing that, that is correct, thank you.
For the record.
So any, I have no other further questions, other than we'll try to make it work and see if we, it's it's workable.
So we're gonna implement this to start now? And you can't make it in June, right? I'm sorry.
In June, yeah, I really don't, you guys can do it, no. To to be clear, they they did uh do meetings um uh online during the heart of COVID, but about a year ago, they stopped. And then they just resumed this past month. And I haven't attended one uh online yet, so I I don't know what the service is like. Um, generally, the meetings don't go for more than thirty five or forty five minutes and um they're pretty interesting overall. So uh I would not hesitate to go, although um two a month for many months in a row uh with my schedule is getting pretty hard. So I'm I'm happy to contribute in my last six weeks here, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. So as to your question, Commissioner Sasson, I would say we implement this effective immediately. Sounds like we're gonna at least give it a shot and if we need to change it, we'll we'll change it up if this doesn't work.
And and should the procedure be if if you have a conflict?
That's, yes.
What do we do?
I we as to um what Becky said is that what we'd like to do is at least put that whoever's responsible for that. If they would then um just if they can't make one, find somebody else to cover for them.
So it's random, just reach out to somebody?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, I'm I'm not saying that's a bad.
Let's start there and see what happens. I'm I'm trying not to add any more to do's for either Aubrey or Becky.
What I'm trying to do is say, would we automatically try to default to asking the person the next month or or some kind of procedure or just, you know, I, you know, swap months or something of that sort, that's all.
That's possible, that's it could be a refinement.
Okay.
Let's just see how this works.
All right, we'll leave it, leave it ad hoc for the moment, that's fine.
Next is communication and we will start with announcing the upcoming planning and zoning meeting dates. Now, I I think I can just do that, right? I mean, I can just, you know, for our next meetings are Thursday, June ninth, twenty twenty two, and Thursday, June twenty third, twenty twenty two.
Do we have agenda items already for the ninth?
We do, I'm trying to think of what it is, but we do.
Uh, yeah, we, um.
Oh, we have a site plan amendment for um another building upgrade, that's what it is.
Thank you. Uh, Joe and Rich will not be here for the June ninth meeting, Marcus is gonna chair uh the meeting.
Right.
Okay, I I I will be able to be here for the ninth, but not the twenty third, for the record.
Okay.
I'll be back for the twenty third. Okay, uh, we will continue our communications with updates uh from our commissioners. Commissioner Kernner.
I don't have any updates, thank you.
Commissioner Sasson.
I have the same update that Commissioner Kernner has.
Ah, Commissioner Clark.
I I have nothing personal to add, Travis did uh send everybody an email, I think, surrounding his his take on the Drainage District meeting this past Tuesday.
Uh, the only thing I would mention is that we are still, we've interviewed two candidates so far for our upcoming um opening on the commission. And we're working to make our our recommendation to Councilmember Hanks on that.
So I won't be the rookie anymore, woo hoo.
So with that, uh, Councilmember Hanks.
Just to remind you about the Memorial Day service.
Come on, come on. The two people that watch this.
The Memorial Day service, Monday, ten o'clock, ten o'clock, ten thirty, let's say ten, ten o'clock, uh, right here next to City Hall. And I think you've had a meeting since City Council, so I think you're up to date.
Yes, that's correct, that's correct, I think that's right as well. Okay, with that, um, Aubrey.
Uh, just the D R C report for April was in your backup material, it was a busy month for us, probably the busiest month in a while. Um, I tried a new format, so take a look and let me know what you think. Um, I just did checkboxes like zone change required, plat required, just to.
I liked it.
I liked it.
Okay, so you can kind of just have it at a glance and not have to read paragraphs, so.
No, that was really good.
Um, okay, good, so we can do that format in the future.
Yeah, no, that was helpful, just to see it like that.
Like, yeah, okay, good deal.
Becky, anything?
Um, I will email out that uh Drainage District liaison sheet just for easy reference. And we'll go from there, if we need to tweak it, we can do that.
Thank you, thank you. Here, anything? Okay, with that, the May twenty sixth, twenty twenty two planning and zoning regular meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everybody.